One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're asking you to remain standing this evening. Southmoreland lost a student last week, Ominic Clark. So we'll have a moment of silence to honor his life. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Vance?
Here.
Dr. Feig?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Eight present. Citizens comments?
We have no comment cards this evening.
Minutes?
It is recommended that the Board approve the minutes of the May 2nd and May 23rd, 2013 meetings.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Second, my Mr... Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero.
Eight to zero.
I'm sorry, thank you. Business and finance fund accounts?
It is recommended that the Board approve the revenue report, expenditure report, bills payable, and accounts payable from May 2013, and the treasures report from May 2013.
Motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Can you a second?
Yes, please.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman. Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here, yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight to zero. Full business, policy 252.
It is recommended that the Board adopt policy 252, relationships between adults and students.
Motion? Show me. Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Alt, questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, and one absent. Policy 253.
It is recommended that the Board adopt policy 253, employees dating students.
Motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, and one absent. New business, policy 217.
It is recommended that the Board approve the posting of policy 217 graduation requirements for thirty days.
Motion? Motion. Motion by Mr. Beistel, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. Any question on the motion?
Were those changes made? Were any changes made?
Well, we're just posting it tonight, so then there will be changes made during the posting.
I thought it was supposed to be changed before it was posted.
I...
He wasn't here, Dr. Scott ran the meeting, so he may not know.
Yeah, Tim and I have not crossed paths very much, but if there were changes that were to be made, we'll get them made before they're voted on.
I think Dr. Scott was checking in the students ranked in the top ten percent.
Okay.
And we'll have to fill you in on... I'm not sure what the other changes were, they had talked about.
When he gets back, we'll look into this.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. 2013-2014 final budget.
It is recommended that the Board adopt the final budget with expenditures of $26,378,342, and revenues of $25,424,558, and fund balance of $953,784. This sets the millage at 71.0579 mils for Westmoreland County, and 14.000 mils for Fayette County.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions on the motion?
I'll let...
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Just to clarify, that the millage here is not a tax increase?
That's correct.
Does that need to be said in the motion, or does most of the millage say the same?
Doesn't need to be, no.
So no, no tax increase?
Correct.
I have a comment, I'll keep it as brief as possible, because I know this Board doesn't want to hear a lot about the budget from me, but Dr. Feig presented a Department of Education research regarding the depletion of our unfunded, unassigned fund balance, showing that next year we will be bankrupt if we continue our present course, which is to use our unassigned fund balance to close a $99,053,000 budget deficit. We're using the unassigned fund balance to pay annual reoccurring operating expenses. Mr. Porter warned against using fund balances for reoccurring operating expenses, saying that the fund balance was for those one-time unexpected expenses like leaky roofs and broken boilers. Dr. Feig, here with us, shows how, for several years, has been using our unassigned fund balance to cover the budget, a practice which will leave us bankrupt next year, as there will be no money in the savings to which to close the budget deficit. The 13th of June meeting was a planning meeting, yet no one on this Board addressed this most serious issue. Do you understand that our affirmative vote for next year's budget is a vote to further deplete our savings account and drive the district into the red? Do you understand that our vote in favor of this budget will make Mr. Porter's and Mr. Salem's bankruptcy prediction a reality? Two previous business managers have told us we're on a path to bankruptcy. Salem introduced three scenarios, but failed to provide an actual unassigned fund balance number, and to show us in detail why bankruptcy was imminent. $684,000 is what we will have left to balance next year's budget and pay for any unexpected emergencies. This year's spending plan steals $953 from our savings account. Next year, we will only have $684 to steal from, if we need thousands, $684,000 available to steal from. If we need more tough, we will be in the red and example bankrupt. Does anyone have numbers that show otherwise? Dr. Feig quantified Porter's and Salem's words. Does anyone dispute Mr. Porter's words or Salem's scenarios for Dr. Feig? As a side note, it's strange, I don't agree with either of them on most issues, but it's surprising that Dr. Feig and I, and Bill Porter, and Mr. Salem have all come to the same conclusion. In closing, if not, then the question becomes, when do we stop stealing from our children's piggy bank? The administration knows it has not presented this Board with any viable alternatives. When do we wake up and realize this sort of budget planning is taking us into bankruptcy? When do we have planning meetings to discuss the options of going in the red? Dr. Feig has said there are three sources of money, the federal or the state, maybe I wouldn't count on that, the local taxpayer, again, I wouldn't count on that, and three, start cutting the fluff. We haven't cut anything. It's time for a serious discussion about finances and where to go from here. I want the administration and Board to show me in writing how we remain solvent in light of Dr. Feig's revelations. We need a plan forward that is best interest of the students and all the stakeholders. I would request that this administration prepare a three-, five-, or seven-year strategic plan that keeps us in the black with no tax increases. We don't need more surprises, we can't afford the administration to come to us next year and say, oops, we need massive tax increases and multiple tax increase exceptions, as we have depleted our savings account and our expenses. The district is impoverished, the average per capita income is less than $19,891. Our administration must realize we cannot stick the poor man with any more tax increases. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I would like it to be a part of the record, so that the public knows that we are using $700, or $953,784 from the fund balance, plus $704,000 from the fund balance, which is classified as income, which shows that this budget has a $1.7 million deficit between revenue and expenses.
Mrs. Kaufman, you want that added to the motion?
No, I don't add it to the motion, but if you want to put your letter in there, that would be okay.
And it was just a...
It doesn't have anything to do with the motion, but it could be put in the minutes.
I want it in the minutes, just in the minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Mornell, do you have any words of wisdom for us on the accuracy of... I mean, I know...
The concept approach is always to be mistly proven.
You know, as next year, I won't be on board next year, but maybe it would be a good idea to do the three-, five-, seven-year, ten-year thing, to, once you get, because you've just started, you know, and to give yourself time to work into that, so you can conceive, because... It's been a couple of years since, you know, we didn't have the right person in the seat before, so... Is that something we make?
Well, the business office will certainly do whatever the school Board directs it to. If you folks want to make that in the form of a motion, that's fine, if not, just direct Dr. Mornell to instruct us, and we'll be glad to work on that.
Josie, are you saying that someone should make a motion that we develop a long-range plan for the school district?
I'm just talking, I didn't say make it a motion, I'm just suggesting that that could be...
You do know I made a motion, and it was voted down, you do know that.
For a long-range plan?
One, three, and five years. It was voted down.
Was that last week?
I think you voted.
That was a couple months ago.
No, no, no.
Excuse me, I have to stick to the motion on the floor.
Yep, absolutely, Mike.
Anyone else have any comments or questions on the budget?
What motion's on the floor?
The 2013-14 final budget. Has a...
Oh, you're... Oh, I thought you were talking about the plan. No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
No.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes...
Six, two.
Six, two, one. Continuing taxes for the 13-14 fiscal year.
It is recommended that the Board approve the continuation of all taxes heretofore levied by the School District of Southmoreland in full force and effect, including those under Act 511, the Local Enabling Act, 53 PS Statute 6901 at SEC. Earned income tax, according to Act 511, at one-half of one percent. Emergency and municipal services tax, according to Act 511, at $5 per person, and real estate transfer tax, according to Act 511, at one-half of one percent.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, questions on the motion?
Could you explain number two to me?
What is... That's the old occupational privilege tax. That's the school district's share of the... Now, it's called the Emergency Municipal Services Act.
Okay.
I think your local body passed a residential... $52 per year, and school boards get $5 of that.
How much, how much is, how much is the rest of the tax, Jim? How much is the rest of the tax?
It's a total of $52.
It's $52?
Yes.
So we get five?
It used to be a $10 tax, and it was split evenly between municipalities and the school boards.
When did it go to $52?
A couple of years ago. That's six, seven years ago.
Who voted for that? I mean, is that a school district imposed tax, or is it a...
No.
It was done by the Commonwealth, the state legislature.
The state authorized it, and then the municipalities...
Decide, no.
...had the right to enact it.
So they made it $52, and we get five? Is that right?
Our share is five, that's the only way I can explain it to you. I think the total is $52.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Establishment of real estate taxation.
It is recommended that the Board adopt the following real estate taxes in accordance with Section 627 of the School Code of 1949 as amended. A tax of 71.0579 mils upon all real estate subject to taxation within Westmoreland County in the Southmoreland School District. The rate of taxation in dollars and cents on each $100 of assessed valuation of taxable property is $7.0159. A tax of 14 mils upon all real estate subject to taxation within the Fayette County and the Southmoreland School District. The rate of taxation in dollars and cents on each $100 of assessed valuation of taxable property is $1.40. Real estate taxes shall be due and payable as follows. Two percent discount when paid from August 1st to September 30th, 2013. Face value when paid from October 1st to November 29th, 2013. And 10 percent penalty when paid on December 2nd, 2013, and thereafter.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel, questions on the roll call, or motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. School property taxes and installments.
It is recommended that the Board direct the collection of installment payments of real estate taxes to be made by the district's real estate tax collectors and their successors in office, who shall set forth on all notices regarding the payment of school real property taxes in three equal installments in the dates, September 30, 2013, October 31, 2013, November 30, 2013, on which such payments are due to set forth on the tax notice sent to approved homestead and farmstead property owners.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kaufman, questions on the motion?
If they make their first payment on September 30th, do they get the 2 percent discount on that portion of it?
No.
They have to make all three.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Real estate tax universal installment.
It is recommended that the Board adopt a resolution which provides the option for installment payments of real estate taxes for all taxpayers. Please see resolution. And the idea here is, the motion that you just passed was for homestead and farmstead property owners. This would include all property owners, whether they are paying taxes on homestead or farmstead or any other type of real estate.
Motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, question on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Homestead and farmstead exclusion, resolution.
Be resolved by the Southmoreland Board of Directors that the homestead and farmstead exclusion real estate tax assessment reductions are authorized for the school year beginning July 1, 2013, under the provisions of the Homestead Property Exclusion Program Act, part of Act 50 of 1998, and the Taxpayer Relief Act, which is Act 1, 2006. It is recommended that the Board approve the amounts available for approved homestead and approved farmstead real estate tax reduction for the school year beginning July 1, 2013.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Beistel, questions on the motion?
That's asked for the resolution, yes, which is included in the packet.
Is that okay with you, Mrs. Rhodes? Okay, can you, Mr. Beistel? Questions on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Burkhymmer, Mr. Mornell?
It's recommended that the Board appoint Mr. James Mornell as its authorized representative to make requests upon and receive all tax informations and records from Burkhymmer.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Agreement with Adelphi Education.
It is recommended that the Board approve alternative education services with Adelphi Education.
Motion? Show me. Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions on the motion?
What is the difference between this and the Crossroads program that's being offered to us now?
I, um... I think they're very similar in nature.
Yeah.
We would obviously, you know, look at the cost of each program, if we can use Crossroads, we certainly would, because we're part of that IU consortium, but it's also good to have an agreement with Adelphi in place in the event we would need to use them.
But we shouldn't use them if they're more expensive.
Well, it would depend on the availability of seated Crossroads, for example.
Okay, that could be a reason.
It would depend on whether or not the particular student we have can be serviced across roads, because sometimes needs are severe. We've had several students, for example, who've tried to get into one of the IU programs, the name escapes me, but we were unable to do so because our student didn't fit the profile that they were able to service, so we had to look elsewhere. So we need to have an agreement such as this in place for those exigencies.
Well, they said they were going to keep the cost down.
Right.
And I'm not sure this is, but I don't care, it's fine.
Yeah, we would, you know, obviously go to the IU first, absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Need a motion to recess, to executive session for personnel?
Labor negotiations and tax litigation.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, personnel.
It's recommended that the Board grant tenure to the following teachers that have completed three years of satisfactory service, and the notices I read in this list, there's one thing that I will not be reading, that's because that individual was granted tenure in a previous district, so it's not necessary to grant tenure here. Tenure is transferable. Sean Cartwright, Kaylee Connors, Lauren Flanders, Marie Heberling, Rachel Means, Hillary Minnick, Gia Pasca, Leanne Richter, Jennifer Teraski, and Morgan Wildy Coleman.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alt, questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. High school and middle school coaches?
It is recommended that the Board approve the recommended candidates as assistant soccer coaches for the 2013-2014 school year. At the high school, Kurt Olinger and Brian Metney. At the middle school, Sean Cartwright and Mark Dye.
Motion?
Show me.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Assistant band equipment hauler? Assistant band equipment hauler?
It is recommended that the board approve Frank Rum and Nolli as assistant band equipment hauler pending receipt of clearances.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second by Mrs. Love. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. Advertise for Spanish teacher sub?
It is recommended that the board authorize administration to advertise for a substitute Spanish teacher for the first semester of the 2013-2014 school year.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. IU report?
Okay, our regular. Okay, you're having these before any more voting or anything? Okay. You're doing it first?
Yeah, but I will walk on items under my superintendent's report.
After.
Yeah, under my superintendent's report.
Okay. Okay, the IU board met on the 25th of June, and Allison Willis, their business manager, reviewed the various budgets with us. And she stressed the fact that now districts are going to get their IDEA money, and they will be billed monthly by the IU. This is a more transparent way to let the districts know what is happening, and there will be no surprises, because each month the districts will know how much they have to pay. And with the change, there will be no school district either subsidizing or not subsidizing each other. The extended school year, districts will be billed for the IDEA costs, and that is the programs that exist in the summertime to prevent regression. They have a new system up there called Alio, and it is working very successfully. They have converted their payroll to the new system. They can very quickly calculate all costs, and it is so efficient and so successful that there's a chance they may be able to eliminate a position. Jack, I had a question. They deleted a life skills support full-time with one classroom assistant at our school district.
That's correct.
Tell me about that. Where was it?
It was at the elementary school, and it was eliminated because there was no enrollment. I think there were going to be two students enrolled, neither one of them were from our district. Because our kids had aged out of that program, and we couldn't justify supporting.
Okay, I was not aware of that class being there.
Oh, it's been here forever.
I didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, currently have an IU life skills class at the primary center, and up until the end of this past year, we had one at South Island Elementary School as well.
You still have the one at the elementary? At the primary?
Right. And we also house hearing care class, the hearing support class is housed here as well.
So that was deleted?
That, that's.
From the SES, yeah. The IU has taken over the Crossroads Alternative Education Program from Hemphill. The superintendent's got a brochure, she said, explaining it, and they've kind of changed the programming and therapeutic aspects of the program from what it was at Hemphill. But essentially, they're going to try to keep it to like $98 a day if they can, and if there were not very many kids, the cost would go up. But the more kids they have, the cheaper it's going to be. And they're renting the room from Hemphill. They, the classroom rental for our building at Roughsdale is $14,000 a year. We pay that. There were some hirings, and they include clerical teaching, special ed speech, and so forth. Many people, as I explained before, under Act 93, scaled back the number of days to decrease the amount of money they were making. A lot of them did that. And under Act 93, they're going to take action to define how much you get for a 200-day year, a 210, a 220, a 260, and so forth, so that these salaries will be specifically defined. The newest person that they hired comes in at 65% of that salary. And this, I thought, was important. I didn't know this, but we pay somebody, workers' compensation insurance, right, Jack? We have a special person that we pay insurance for workers' comp, right? She said that.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, she said that they were looking at their insurance rates, and Highmark has been going around selling a workman's comp insurance, and it saved the IU $40,000.
I don't know who their previous carrier was. We, we.
Who do we have?
We go through the FURIA.
PSBA.
Yeah, the FURIA, the FURIA Mongel handles it through the PSBA.
They recommended to all of us that we tell our districts to take a good look at that, because she saved, I think she said $40,000.
Yep. The folks at the FURIA Mongel did get quotes.
Okay.
From our current carrier, which is the PSBA, through the old Republic Insurance Company, and from Highmark, and a couple other carriers. Highmark came in belows, and what the FURIA Mongel did, they went back to the PSBA insurance trust, and they said, you know, the district is seriously looking at Highmark. Would you consider matching the rate?
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
And they did.
There you go. There you go. They used to have PSBA too, and they dropped it because it was so high. They're doing negotiations with the teachers on their new contract. But the big thing that they presented at our meeting, and, Jack, did you see that program, the Center for Innovation and Creativity in Education?
I didn't know.
You didn't see that? I'm sure you will. We were just, we had no idea this was going on. The IU has developed this thing called, and they're going to be, the Center for Innovation and Creativity in Education. And we got a presentation, and it's a new endeavor, and it's based on this quote. What the world cares about is not what you know, but what you can do with what you know. And they believe that our students need more than just knowledge, we need innovative thinkers. So what they did, is they went down to Allegheny County, and they looked at their facility. And what this thing is going to be, is that people, staff, students, administrators, can come into this area, and they can experiment with new ideas and activities. And what they did, they took their old computer lab that had just rows of tables with computers on it, and they said that concept is passe. They said, they emptied it out, and they are making this room now to be used for projects and programs, and will allow for group activities and interactions. Students, faculty, whatever can come in, they can create, design, build, and produce what they envision. And they will use their space now, like major corporations have done, to prepare our students like major corporations have used to develop their employees. That's the physical part. Then the program part consists of several things. The first thing they do, they're going to do is they're going to establish a thing called the problem bank, a problem bank. And what they're going to do is ask the community, all kinds of industries and so forth, to bring in real-world problems, and give them to students to learn how to solve them, and have them brainstorm and develop that. The next one is called the ICE Institute, ICE Institute, and that's where they will bring in personnel to work on innovative educational practices. Then they have the ICE maker. And the maker part means that the students will come in, and they will actually create things. And what the IU will do is they will rent and provide space for schools to use for district teachers and staff. But the last one was the most impressive of them all, and it's called the ICE Box. And it is robotics. The research now shows that autistic students who cannot work with people because of their severe social problems work well and respond to robots, because their interactions are less threatening than humans. These humanoid robots are motivating autistic children. They showed us a film, they showed us how this works, and these children are not threatened by them, and that robots simplify interactions. Autism now occurs, I guess, about one in every 90 students. And they talked about, one robot costs $20,000. The IU objective is to bring in this new process, and they're going to go out and see if they can get grants. They said they'll need about a half a million dollars, but they can do it in phases, in steps. And these robots, they showed us the demonstration, they're designed to teach and to educate. And they're called NAO, N-A-O, it's pronounced "now." But it was, it's a breakthrough, and they showed us the sources of research. And what happened, they showed us actual students and how they responded to these robots. The kids are not afraid of them. And these robots talk, you can program them to do anything they want. They move their hands, they move their eyes, they have speakers in their ears and their mouth. It was amazing. The next meeting is August 6, which is moved up to be a little bit early, so that, in case things have to be done before school starts. Then we went on to handle all routine business hirings. There was a resignation. And they elected offices for next year, and they're the same people that have been there for a long time.
Do you have a question?
We had our meeting last night, and excited to say that all nine districts have approved the ESCO resolution for the new funding to take effect of the project. There was not one school board member of the nine districts that voted no on it, so it was all, you know, nine zeros, or whoever was president of the meeting, everyone voted yes on the project. So the engineers or boilers are on order, and the gentleman from the finance company was there last night as well, and his rate is going to be 2.99%. Our first payment will take effect July 15, 2014. The project should be completed, the majority of the project will be completed in January 2014. However, in June next year, two weeks, we'll have to shut down, have a shutdown for all these, changing over the power, switch gears and whatnot, so everybody can take a break for two weeks. But the majority of the project will be done in January 2014. So thank you for everybody for that. It's a 20-year savings, projected act 39 savings over 20-year period is $1,372,186 over 20 years. One of the teachers retired, the CAD teacher, so they are looking into possibilities of seeing through the Department of Ed. I guess that program has declined over the years because of, most of the districts have their own CAD problems, so that classroom has declined, so they're going to get permission from the Department of Ed to go take it down to halftime, they just kept deleting. So they're looking for maybe some different ideas in the future of what to hold up there, so in case in the event that does get deleted, something new forthcoming may come up there. But that was, the majority of the night was the voting on the resolution, and so thank you all for that.
Thank you. Yes, please. Do you have a question?
Just a couple of updates on some legislation. First of all, PSBA has scheduled a web conference on July 2 noon to provide an update on the final 2013-2014 budget and the spending plan. If the budget does not pass on June 30, the web conference would be rescheduled. So if anyone is interested, let me know, we can take part. In the Senate action, Senate Bill 57 passed, it allows for audio taping on school buses. School boards would have to adopt a policy informing the students and parents by mailing a letter to the student's home and imposing notice in each bus with the equipment. Another one that passed was Senate Bill 137, and now amends the Speech Language and Hearing Licenseure Act by updating the definition of audiologist. It requires all new applicants for this license to maintain and want a master's or a doctor's degree from an accredited program from an accredited agency. And also lose teachers from the hearing impaired from the license requirements. House Bill 290 has been amended, it deals with small games of chance, that are fundraisers for school booster clubs. Boosters clubs would be able to conduct games at its own location or any premise not prohibited by local ordinances. License fees would be $150 for regular license and $10 for a limited occasion license to conduct games, and then not more than three occasions per, a total of seven days per year. The House, the House Finance Committee approves Senate Bill 797, which brings PISERS into compliance with federal laws and removes inconsistencies in the Pennsylvania Military Code, the Public Schools Code, and the PISERS Retirement Code. And one last thing, this is the last week, if we have anything to submit for the legislative platform items to be discussed at the conference in Hershey on October, we have to get that submitted, I believe by tomorrow. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Superintendent.
I have a couple of items to walk on. First item is we would entertain a motion that we continue our lease of Roughsdale Elementary School, request more than intermediate unit for the same terms and conditions as they were during the previous year.
Motion?
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman? Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions from the audience? Questions or comments from the board? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent.
The next item has to do with a contract with the Service Employees International Union Local 32BJ. Whereas the current collective bargaining agreement with SEIU 32BJ for the cafeteria service employees, custodians, and maintenance employees expires on June 30, 2013, and whereas the school board's negotiating committee has recommended that the school board adopt a tentative agreement, now therefore be resolved that the Board of School Directors approves the collective bargaining agreement with SEIU Local 32BJ for a term beginning on July 1, 2013, and ending on June 30, 2017, containing the provisions as outlined in the packet that is made part of the resolution.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions from the audience? Questions from the board?
Clement, first of all, I'd like to say that we only got this contract less than an hour ago, and I think we should have had more time on it. Having said that, secondly, I'd like to know where the money's coming from to support this contract. And lastly, and this will be reflected in my vote, this group of 48 custodians and cooks, they did the right thing by this school district the last time by taking a freeze all the way Iran. There are some of the lower wage owners in our school system who do a very hard job, and we appreciate that. And I just want them to know that they, that we appreciate what they did for us last time, last contract.
Anyone else?
I have a few seconds, and I just wanted to say that I greatly appreciate the work that negotiated between the two of us, and respect the news, the information and bargaining that was presented by the other side, and do recommend that you clarify the contract that was reported.
Roll call, please.
Oh, I had something left. Okay, okay.
Waiting.
No, you called for a vote. Go ahead.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absent. I would also like to thank the committee for all of our work and funding.
Okay, thank you. The next item I have for you is, you know, we're in the process of moving the administrative building, or the occupants of the building. As it stands now, food service is moved there in the room across from the gymnasium at SES. The business office is moved there in a room across from the office at SES. Peggy and I have moved, and we are in the middle school office suite. Charlie and Mrs. Geyer are in the process of packing and moving. They will be in the AD's office near the gymnasium. Dr. Scott, Mr. Clara, Ms. Califf, and Mrs. Shali are in the process of packing. June is a rather busy month, especially in terms of federal programs, because that's when federal programs come due, so they're trying to get all of their June work accomplished before they pack up and move, and we would expect it within the next two weeks. They will be moved also. So overall, it's going very smoothly. Our maintenance and custodial staff has done a yeoman's job in helping to make that all happen, so I'll thank them for that ahead of time. But in conjunction with that, we obviously had talked about what we needed to do with the current building. And when we had it appraised, we discovered that the land that that building is on is part and parcel of the entire campus, and including this building in SES. And in order to even think about selling that, we would need to subdivide the lot. So we would entertain a motion that you authorize administration to engage the services of a local surveyor to subdivide the lot, and then to proceed with the necessary approvals at the governmental agency levels to make that happen, so that we can prepare to attempt to sell that building.
I know you're supposed to wait until there's a motion, but are you going to put five acres with it, one acre, three feet? I mean, how do you do that?
I believe the recommendation from the appraiser was 0.8 acres.
Okay, we didn't know that, so.
Pretty much.
That would be enough.
Pretty much.
Motion?
And again, it would depend on where the surveyor thinks the property line can reasonably be drawn as well, so it may be a little more or less.
Well, I just think we should have some control over that.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's about eight tenths of an acre.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions from the audience?
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absentee.
The last item I have is the committee of the board has been meeting with the protection committee of the borough to talk about how we can streamline situations, especially in terms of crossing guards and school police, so that we can get those services provided more efficiently. In some cases, we have both the school policeman and a crossing guard on one corner, we're not sure if that needs to happen. So what the borough is proposing in terms of some of our discussions, and the committee certainly supports their proposal, is that they would like to provide safety training for the crossing guards. The crossing guards, by the way, for those of you who aren't aware, are funded fifty percent by the district and fifty percent by the borough. They would like to provide a training for the crossing guards in terms of safety and they asked if they might use one of our classrooms to conduct that training, so we would seek approval for that. And as part of the same motion, we would seek approval. They lost half of their office staff, they have one secretary and a borough manager down there right now, so they asked if we would take over the managing and scheduling of the crossing guards specifically when somebody calls in sick to schedule the subs. And that would include the ability to use Southland School Police as crossing guard subs after they've been trained to do that. Because right now, I think they have a total of one substitute and they're having, whenever there's someone that they can't replace, they're having to call out a patrolman, pay the patrolman overtime to be a crossing guard. So we think it can be done more efficiently and effectively this way with the same financial arrangement that we currently have in those situations, it would be a fifty-fifty situation. So we would entertain a motion to that effect, again, approving training of the crossing guards in a SE, in a Southland classroom, authorizing Mr. Swink to take over the scheduling of the guards, specifically subs, and then to use school police as subs on an as-needed basis when crossing guard subs are not available.
Motion.
Second. First, my Mr. Beistall, second. Second, my Mr. Polakowski. Questions from the audience? Questions from the board?
Charlie, I can't tell this next word. Does he get a vote?
Charlie is actually part of the committee. He's been sitting on the meeting.
So you're giving crossing guards and more school police now taking lessons, you're studying more than that.
And again, with the crossing guards, this is only for call-offs, okay? Because they're a regular set of crossing guards that come to work every day and know where they're going. But if the crossing guard, if Chestnut and Scotty Way is ill, then Charlie would be the person to find that replacement.
I got a question. Is the Scottdale and Everson the same thing?
No, they are not, and that's one of the things that we discussed is that inviting, the arrangement is the same, but we have not been meeting with Everson and in our last meeting we discussed inviting Everson to join in that conversation as well.
That's why I brought that up. I think you should extend the invitation and the offer.
Absolutely. And in terms of the training as well. This was actually a process that was initiated by Borough Council and the Protection Committee some years ago and we finally were able to get it underway here, but we do intend to invite Everson to the next meeting.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero one. That concludes my report. Mr. Beistall, second, my Mr. Polakowski.
Okay.
Roll call. Sorry, yes, supervisor, solicitor, sorry.
Sorry, Mark.
It is, I was going to ask.
This is a version of a kind of a document, a document that has been addressed in regards to two point five, the master's health paper, six points four, ten, zero, zero, four, five. Here's all the four school directors and forms of professional health and cancer services that are being included in the professional services related to the taxes as we deal with others. As per this proposal, consultant, case of service, fifty-two dollars and authorized directly to the president or vice president to exonerate him. Secretary. I have a question.
Motion, Mrs. Kaufman, second. Second, my Mr. Polakowski. Questions from the audience? Questions from the board? Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero one. That concludes my report. Mr. Beistall, second, my Mr. Polakowski.
Okay.
Roll call. Sorry, yes, supervisor, solicitor, sorry.
Sorry, Mark.
It is, I was going to ask.
This is a version of a kind of a document, a document that has been addressed in regards to two point five, the master's health paper, six points four, ten, zero, zero, four, five. Here's all the four school directors and forms of professional health and cancer services that are being included in the professional services related to the taxes as we deal with others. As per this proposal, consultant, case of service, fifty-two dollars and authorized directly to the president or vice president to exonerate him. Secretary. I have a question.
Motion, Mrs. Kaufman, second. Second, my Mr. Polakowski. Questions from the audience? Questions from the board? Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero one. That concludes my report. Mr. Beistall, second, my Mr. Polakowski.
Okay.
Roll call. Sorry, yes, supervisor, solicitor, sorry.
Sorry, Mark.
It is, I was going to ask.
This is a version of a kind of a document, a document that has been addressed in regards to two point five, the master's health paper, six points four, ten, zero, zero, four, five. Here's all the four school directors and forms of professional health and cancer services that are being included in the professional services related to the taxes as we deal with others. As per this proposal, consultant, case of service, fifty-two dollars and authorized directly to the president or vice president to exonerate him. Secretary. I have a question.
Motion, Mrs. Kaufman, second. Second, my Mr. Polakowski. Questions from the audience? Questions from the board? Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight zero with one absentee. Anything else? Questions for the jury?
I'd like to say something. At the last meeting, I got several phone calls on this. At the last meeting, it was reported in the newspaper that I made a motion to take money away from the teachers to put into the fund balance, when in fact I made a motion to take money out of the fund balance to be protected, to pay the teachers. I wrote a letter of correction to the paper, but they chose not to print it, so I just want people to know that the motion, that failed for lack of a second. No one supported it, was to take money out of the fund balance to protect it, to pay the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar bonuses that were promised to the teachers. Thank you.
Motion, Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second, my Mrs. Love, all those in favor?
Aye. All of you opposed?
Good night, thanks for coming. Everybody have a good Fourth of July.